Welcome, welcome, welcome everyone to another beautiful Tuesday at the Sarah Stevenson Tuesday Morning Forum. My name is Winston Robinson. I am a facilitator along co-facilitators. Ms. Laura McClady, Ms. Carlinia Ivory Canty, Ms. Jackie Walton Edwards-Walton, Ms. Natalie McElreth, Ms. Mary Johnson, our website editor and archivist, Mr. Steve Johnson, Ms. Serita Shero, our chaplain, and the one man house man, Dr. Thomas. Our forum runs from 8:30 to 9:45 a.m., at which time we will pause for announcements from the audience. Announcements can also be sent to S. Johnston at tuesdayforumcharlotte.org. As always, we begin with a prayer from our chaplain, Ms. Serita Shero.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Come on and pray with me. Dear heavenly Father, we're thankful today for having been left a clear focus. That focus is to impart to our audience useful information that makes them better citizens, better neighbors, better knowledgeable about situations that are at hand. And at hand now is the election which starts on Thursday, this Thursday. We're thankful for the continuous camaraderie among us, the staff. We're happy today for the rain, for the sunshine, for the weather, no matter what, because we know it's in your hands. Bless our nation, bless the world, our nation's leaders as they go abroad to help ameliorate the ailments among the Israelis and the Gaza Strip. Bless our state, our state's leaders, bless our county and our county leaders, bless our city and our city leaders, bless our many precincts and the different communities. Help us give someone information that they will impart on their ballots. And remember our children always. It's in your son Jesus's name we pray. Let us all say together.
Amen.
Thank you so much, Ms. Serita. I don't see any first timers in the room. We typically allow first timers to introduce themselves and any organizations in which they have associations or affiliations. Today, our guest, you see, will be candidates for District Three. Tiawanna Brown did text me and say she is on the way. However, I have not heard from Mr. James Harrison Bowles, Bowles who is also running for District Three. But we will take this time to acknowledge a few announcements and acknowledge our elected officials. We see, Mr. Tariq McCarty, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Thank you all for having me here today. And I've been coming for about on and off invitations for 20 years. And I'm just grateful to have the opportunity to join you guys. I'm also grateful that Ms. Sarah Stevenson created such an amazing, respectful dialogue and debate forum such as this that can thrive in our city. And it's just been a humble and honor to get to experience it. And I was so sad when I saw ultimately the news, but I'm so happy that I got to experience a small part of that.
Thank you so much, Councilman. We'll see you soon, right again. And we have Judge Keith Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I echo Councilman Reed's commentary on Ms. Stevenson and the impact reports that she provided in the community and that you all still continue to do so. I am committed to fairness, accountability, compassion. Young man asked me why I want to be a judge. It's because I like serving people, helping people. That's what it's about. So thank you for the opportunity and thank you for the mic check.
Thank you, Judge Smith. Now, we have, last but not least, Ms. Ellery, the sister of Ms. Sarah Stevenson, with an announcement and some keepsakes for us all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I will remain seated if that's okay, but someone said they saw me sitting in the back on the last Tuesday that I was here, and I'm sure they didn't know my physical condition. But anyway, I'm happy to be back again today. I'm on a different mission. I have more of the tributes to Sarah that we did not have available at her funeral. As I said then, they were hot off the press. These are hot off the press. They were delivered to my house at nine o'clock last night. Each of you may take a copy. I have copies from the Charlotte Observer, which has her article that ran in the paper. And someone commented that Sarah made above the fold. It's important when you're above the fold. Those of you who may have heard that. The Charlotte Post also ran information on my sister. I have copies of that. Feel free, take one of each. And all of the comments that Steve collected for me on the webpage that he set up for comments. He captured them all and they are in here because I know if you were at the funeral and you wanted to have something to say, I have a lot more to say, but I wasn't allowed to have butted down two minutes. And one thing I wanted to say to everyone, you all knew my sister. Am I on time limit now?
Yeah.
No.
And she would always say, if she saw that she wasn't gonna win at suggestion, a difference of opinion, she would say, well, let's agree to disagree. And I was thinking, I can imagine her in heaven now looking at a lot of her friends who are there. And then she looks at Jesus and says, well, why isn't he here? Why isn't she here? And Jesus would say, well, that was my decision. And Sarah said, well, Jesus, can we agree to disagree? Now, y'all, that's supposed to be a joke. Did y'all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all I have. Feel free to take this. I will stay with the entire meeting. And I'd like to congratulate the winner. I'm not in your district. But hopefully, we'll get a good person out of District Three that can balance the other good people that we have serving. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. From this little bit now, you miss nothing. Thank you, Ms. Ellery. Yeah, so again, following the presentation from our presenters, we will take questions from the audience. Please raise your hand, and I will add your name to a list and call on you in the order in which your hand was raised. Questions should be questions and no longer than 30 seconds. We have a timekeeper, Ms. Natalie McElreth, who will signal when you have 30 seconds. Give 30 seconds then when you have time. We have Ms. Tiawanna Brown, District Three's candidate.
Even after you changed the date on me. Someone did. I had another bit.
You're on the slide, right?
No, no pressure. I just canceled.
You didn't do anything.
It's important for me to be here, so I rearranged my schedule.
Well, with that said, let's just go right on into an introduction. This is your fiery candidate for District Three City Council, Ms. Tiawanna Brown. The floor is yours. Please proceed, Judge. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We always have a moment for silence, but we take time to silence our phones. Make sure it's a moment for silence, but we take a minute to make sure don't be the one. Dr. Thomas, the one man house man. Thank you so much. All right. Ms. Brown.
Good morning. It is an absolute pleasure to be here, first giving honors to God, who truly has blessed me beyond measures. I am here because it's important for me to show up even if I'm the only one in the room. I am an elected Democrat candidate, chosen by the people for the people. So if one person come, two people come, 50 people come, I'm going to try my best to show up. I know the date was changed. I just got back here on vacation. I deserved that. Healing is very important to me, self-care. This is a very challenging and tough position that I have offered myself up for, my family. I've offered my family up, and it requires a lot. And so when people come out and they show me that they have questions or concerns about the position just as I have, I'm going to show up intentionally. I'm going to stand in my truth and be who I am. So I thank God for all of you for coming out today. Your time is as valuable as mine. And so I'm here because I am the Democrat nominee for City Council District Three. And I don't know where everybody else is at, but I am here. And so I am here to answer any questions and to engage with you about whatever concerns that you may have. So thank you so much, Tiawanna Brown, Charlotte City Council candidate for District Three. It's important that we know that, okay? Thank you.
Tiawanna, let me take the liberty to ask you just to kind of go into who you are as a person, your upbringing, what inspired you to run for this district in particular.
Thank you so much for that question again. I am back from running off of a very close race against Dr. Victoria Watleton last year. And I felt the need to come back, to show people that I was very serious about responding to the constituents. There was a time when I said that I never ever wanted to be in politics. I don't consider myself a politician. I know that that is the title that comes with the role and the responsibilities that we have, but I love people. I love to stand in my truth and explain to people what it really is to be involved in a government like City Council, to lead people, to be in that role. As I'm studying this role, as I'm learning what they do, I see. Thank you so much for coming. You're very, although we are different, I love a lot of your views, understanding your truth, and I respect that. So people are concerned about what is going on in our city and how people are leading the city. When you want someone to vote for you, you tell them what they want to hear, and then you disappear. To me, it's a form of disrespect if you're invited to something as historic and as valuable as Sarah Stevenson Tuesday Morning Forum. Unless you have something that is important on your agenda, family, an emergency, you should be here because it shows the people if they can't be here today in person. Because people have to work, but they can go back and look at it and review it and see what's going on. The reason why I'm running for City Council is because I was asked by a community of people to step up. And at first, I said no. I said no for a few years. But then I said, well, if not me, then who? I'm already doing the work. I'm already out in the community. I just want to represent my people from a different perspective. Maybe if they had someone like me out in the community telling them what policy and procedures really look like and not just assuming what it's like. Because I'm gonna tell you right now, just from winning the nominee, my emails, my text messages, the hate mail, we were promised this, we were promised that. People need to understand what City Council do, what our values are, how we represent the people, what we can and cannot do. And people tell you what you want to hear. I'm sorry, I'm not gonna be that person. And I know you said fiery candidate. Call it what you want. I'm gonna be who I am. You know, I can't change what God has called me to do. I'm 52 years old. I'm gonna stand in my truth. I'm gonna respect everyone. But respect is definitely a two-way street. And I have been disrespected a lot in this position. And it's not gonna happen. That's not who I am.
All right, we have a question from Mr. Tom Robinson.
Yeah, my question is.
Sorry.
My question is. My question is, what makes you different from out of the candidates for District Three?
A lot of candidates have, you know, they come with a long resume of experience in the work that we're doing, working in government, working in policy, working in procedures. I don't have a wealth of that, you know. I have enough of it to be able to come and negate and navigate through the policies like any other position or any job that you go for. You read it, you study, you understand. But regardless of what my values and my morals are, what my agenda is, what my schedule is, what I plan to do, you can't execute anything. It's my vote, and then I need five more. So the big picture would be, am I able to work with a team of people and can get them to understand what it is that I want to do and execute that? Because I can be the greatest person ever, but there is not an I in team. There's not an I in team, so I would not even matter. Once I take that oath to represent our community and to represent the constituents of District Three, which really is the constituents of the city of Charlotte altogether, we're gonna have to work together. And so there are a lot of demands from constituents, but I like to say this. Only 5% of people came out to vote. It's pitiful. In a city where we have 900,000 people, people can get upset all they want to. I won at 61%, but it's sad. It's only 1,800 people. But I'm gonna be representing a district that has almost 120,000 plus people. I can't say you didn't vote for me. I can't say you didn't come out to the polls to volunteer. I'm still gonna represent those people that tried to execute me because of my past, which is something that we all have in this room. We all have done something that we're not proud of. We all have. If you've been living long enough, you've been a target. But I stand in my truth, and it's who I am. My life is an open book, so you can't attack what's already been addressed. So what makes me different is I am a fierce defender of truth. And when the tough questions come, I answer them. I stand bold and courageously and bring what I represent, and that is not going to change. It's just like our ancestors. They were attacked, but they stood in their truth to try to be the change that they wanted to see. And that's what you're gonna get when you represent a community of people that may not think you deserve to be there. I'm still the City Council representative for all people. The people that voted for me, they voted for me unanimously. So that's why I'm here.
All right, we have a question from Ms. Laura McClady.
My question is, it was kind of twofold. Tell me, what in living in District Three, what has the most significant thing happened by way of City Council since you've been living there? And what would you like to be, your legacy to be, once you're in office? Or, you know, once you leave office, what would you like your legacy to be on your accomplishment in that district?
Well, I'm new to City Council, but I live in District Three. And to me, District Three is influx, is growing. The infrastructure cannot keep up with the number of people that live out there. There's a lot of traffic. There's a lot of building. It's booming. And so when you're coming from downtown Charlotte in that area and you're traveling anywhere in Steel Creek, it takes you forever to get down 160. And I know that there was a widening project that was put in place or was supposed to be proposed, and it never happened. So that would be something that I would like to see, for us to be able to move around that district. It's a very nice place to live. I live in Steel Creek. I live in Barrett, actually, right off of 160 and Dixon River Road, but it's very congested. So I would like to see what we can do to collaborate on what it looks like to be able to move around Steel Creek and not take two hours to get down 160. There's a lot of growth, massive growth, that's happening out there. And so I would like to see what that looks like as we build and we move forward in City Council. My legacy on City Council, I don't know how long I'm gonna be there. I'm a defender of truth, and I don't know if it's gonna be short-lived or if I'm gonna run again. It depends on what happens when I'm on City Council. I mean, it's the truth. It is the truth. I can't tell you that I'm gonna be on City Council forever. I know that if I make it through these two years and people elect me, I plan to do what I need to do with my colleagues and represent my constituents in the best way that I can. I can't say that I'm gonna be long-term in politics. It is what it is. Politics is not something that I'm very fond of. There's a lot of hate. There's a lot of turmoil. There's a lot of not getting along with each other, dragging each other down. How are we gonna represent a city when we as 11 people, including the mayor, can't come together and conform the way that we need to conform? I know that people may not want to hear what I'm saying, but it's the truth. And so do I want to be a part of that? My life is accelerating. You know, I'm a representative of the Department of Justice, where I worked with the Biden administration, that I represent people that are formerly incarcerated all over the world. So when I come in, I've already been working on policy, you know. So when I come in, do I want to come into, I'm hoping that I could be a ray of hope and sunshine on that City Council. That's what I'm looking for. That we could first get along with each other, because I see it. I look at the meetings. I see what's going on. Do I really want to be a part of that is the real question. My legacy, I want people to know that when I came in, I did the best job that I could do with what we're able to do. There's some things we can do and some things we can't do. So I want to be able to be known by being the woman and do the best that she could do for the people that put in office and as constituents and the community. And respect every last one of my colleagues as Senator Diis with me, if I'm granted the opportunity to do so.
All right, we have a question from Ms. Jackie Edwards-Walton.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Walker.
Regarding hope and sunshine, the City Council over the last, I guess, the last year has given funds to organizations, pretty much grassroots like Hills Charlotte and Fighting Missionaries around, both of them are dealing with housing.
Freedom Fighting Missionaries, yes, ma'am.
And Hills Charlotte. What would you do to continue that so that services are closer to the White?
You know what? That is very near and dear to my heart. Ms. Walker, thank you so much for that question.
Walton.
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 Please forgive me, Ms. Walker. That is very near and dear to my heart. I work with Greg Jackson. I work with Kenny Robinson. I think that whenever you take your life experience, nonprofit, there is not a lot of money in nonprofits. So when the city of Charlotte, I give them a round of applause for sending money their way, $2 million and above. I know that it takes a lot of money to make sure that the organization is run and that they're functional. So that was a big kudos to me. I would like to see more money coming out of the $3.5 billion budget that we have going towards graduate organizations. They're on the front line. They're working and they're moving, and they're accelerating the city. And people trust them. They trust them because they're involved and they're connected to what's going on. We can try to downplay it as much as we like as a people, as a community, but when you pour into people that are closest to what's going on, you're gonna get results and you're gonna get them at an alarming rate. So my stance on that will be to pour more in to our community and make sure that those funds are allocated to phenomenal people like Greg and Kenny.
Thank you very much for being here. My name is Rick Pfeifer. I've only been here since 2018. My life is in Columbus, Ohio. My question is this, is I watch the nature of government here. I come from a strong city management, city mayor, citizen. This is county manager, or city manager. I notice that council does not have their own staff themselves, that they rely on staff in the city manager's office. Would you advocate putting in a budget, align it, and that you could hire your own staff independent of the city manager, so you could have help in asking the questions? You want to have help so that you don't necessarily get views filtered through what the city staff wants to tell you?
What was your name again?
Councilmember, my name is Rick Pfeifer.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pfeifer. Thank you for your question, a great question. And what I've learned so far, I've been contacted already by the administrative and telling me how things is gonna work and that we will have an assistant. With the influx of questions and work that have already been pushed on me as a candidate, yes. The answer to that?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes. I mean, I don't, we need more help. We, go ahead.
I'd like to push a little bit more because.
No, I.
It seems to me that to have a true, I'm sorry, thank you. Councilmember, it seems to me to really have a true.
Councilwoman-elect.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Councilmember, a true branch of government equal to the executive. You need your own staff. It's not hired by the city manager, but hired by you. Would you go so far as to ask in the budget with your colleagues that you set aside something where each of you could hire your own staff rather than rely on someone who's been hired by the city manager to really work there, but be your own person?
Absolutely, 100%. But what we need to realize is that when we have our own staff, we don't want it to be biased, right? If I get, and I'm hiring everybody that represents what I represent, don't you think that's a little biased? Get the mic. We can go back and forth, you know, talking.
Well, so we, we, it's not.
No, I just want to, I want to.
That's not the rules, okay? It's not the rules.
Yeah, well, how about this? We'll circle back.
Let me just say this. Let me just say this, Will. We need more help.
Can't go over there here.
Well.
I can do what?
Finish your thoughts, and we'll come back.
No, what was you saying? I want to be respectful.
No, 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 I'm just joking.
Okay.
Winston. Well, please finish your thoughts, and we'll circle back to Mr.
My thoughts are this, whatever it takes to get the job done and run effectively and efficiently is what I would like. Now, I don't know all the details of having staff, myself, where that, but would I push for that? It depends on what that looks like. So I'm open to doing whatever we can do to run effectively and efficiently. Let me just say that.
All right, we have a question from Ms. Faith Tree.
Good morning. So my question is sort of larger scale and longer term. Earlier this year, there was fires in Maui, Lahaina. And one of the things that was a big issue is a lot of electrical wiring above ground. So if you drive through Charlotte, particularly up and down South Tryon, into Third District, just along South Tryon, there's all of this above-ground wiring, and it's throughout the city. So long-term, any thoughts about working with Duke, Piedmont, anybody to begin the undergrounding process? A lot of other cities have done it. It's really an obsolete way for us to have electrical above-ground, and it's also a safety hazard. So any thoughts on that?
My thoughts would be anything that's gonna make us move around effectively and safe. I know that some of the bigger cities have probably had that in their plan already. I don't know if that's a part of our 2040 comprehensive plan. I'm not sure if that's something that we have that can be implemented, but it would be something that if it's gonna make it safe, the above-ground wiring that you're speaking of, I would love to look into that and see what that looks like. And you said specifically in District Three on South Tryon.
Yeah, if you go up and down South Tryon from, if you go up and down South Tryon, that's an easy example. You can go from, look at Arrowood to Tyrola, just that small portion. But if you go up and down, even in the city, I was coming 277 on the highway. There are wires over the highway. So if you just think about the telephone poles, the electrical poles, a lot of that with technology is very expensive, but we need to start the process for undergrounding. And that's gonna be a big issue for me with elected officials as we go through the next decade or so, particularly with climate change and just protecting the city from fires. If we have a storm or hurricane, all it takes is one of those that come down and start hitting some of the tree canopies and grass, and you've got the whole city on fire. Not trying to add any energy, but if you look at Lahaina, in Maui, that whole community was an historic community burned to the ground, a lot of lives lost. So just a point.
Well, I know that under the UDO, trees are included in that, and I don't know what, how extensive that is. Someone asked me, did I read the UDO in its entirety? Absolutely not. It's a working document. It's something that we go in, there's a committee for the UDO. Am I gonna have to learn the specifics of what it entails and details? Absolutely. But when someone that's running for office tell you that they read something like the UDO and it's entirely, and they don't have a history of sitting on City Council, that will not be true. It is so extensive and it's so detailed. But I did write down your questions. That's very important to me. But I don't know the full answer to something. I want to research and find out if it's something that we can do, if it's something we even looking at. But would let the colleagues know that our constituent had a very legitimate and safety concern. And I think it would be something that all of us would have our eyes focused on when it comes to safety. So thank you so much for that question.
Let me, let me, allow me to say this too. Of course, we're not, right now, the rules are a bit more relaxed since we only have Ms. Brown representing the candidates for District Three. Typically, we don't allow back and forth nor debate. However, again, in a given circumstance, we wanna allow a little more commentary and dialogue.
I just wanted to say, Rick, I think that that may, the issue you're talking about, I think that may be a state charter issue. And because in North Carolina, it's pretty much strong manager. But I have not been through the school of government, but I think that may be the issue.
All right, we have a question from Tom Robinson.
City of Charlotte, I'm going through that issue, but numerous years there, and why? And it's nothing new. I mean, it counts, I mean, for 30 years. And it's nothing new. I mean, it counts. I mean, for 30 years, they've been going through the same issue there and why.
All right, first.
Morning.
Good morning.
Children in Charlotte, just a children of a certain income bracket, lower income bracket. What is it, do you have any plans for just programs or things to do to kind of just keep them occupied or just growing in a direction that doesn't lead them into mischief on these other streets?
Absolutely. I mean, I'm already working with the children. I'm already involved with children, dreaming of my life to avoid them from going into incarceration, to avoid them from gun violence, safety, working with CMS, working with Fort the Struggle, Inc., different programs. I would like what Ms. Walton said in the back. We have to go ahead and pour into what is working. I will, I'm open for ideas of how we can add to that and extend that, but the children are our life, they're our future. So we definitely have to pour into them. What the budget looks like for our children, I'm not sure, but I'm all over the place when it comes to our children and advocating for their safety, making sure they get a fair and equal and just education and that we keep them out of the streets so that they don't end up on the path that I end up on. I was born poor, right here in Charlotte, North Carolina. My mom had to work and walk to work. So I would, would first of all, would like to say yes, you know, my plans to continue doing the work that I'm doing to make sure that we can pour into the organizations that have their hands up every Monday at the city council meeting and say, hey, look at me, I'm here to pour into our group of children that need us, a specific area code, zip code. I'm that person. So I'm gonna be pouring into what's near and dear to my heart. I'm not gonna walk away from it. I'm not gonna turn a deaf ear to what you're asking me and what I see happening. So yes, I would like to allocate funding over, out of the budget to what we can do to keep our children safe. And I know a lot of that would be in our neighborhoods that are overlooked and underserved, but also developing a program where parents were involved, like my mom was, even though she was a single mom and had to work all the time. There were, there were programs like the Bethlehem Center that you and I both grew up in. That was phenomenal. They had phenomenal parents, phenomenal teachers. But as you can see, Bethlehem Center has evacuated away. And so that's something that I grew up in. That's something that teachers were there, that poured their heart and soul into us to make us the wonderful people that we are, even though I made bad choices. Bethlehem Center, we need one on every corner in our city.
I got a question. If you could, please, just talk about some of the things you're prioritizing in your agenda when you made the city council. What's really important to you? What would you like to push through?
Safe neighborhoods, workforce development, the four corridors and West Boulevard, working with them. You know, you come down Remount Road. I drive down Remount Road every day. My grandmother lives there. You see the corners of West Boulevard to Remount Road, what that looks like, cleaning those up, working with the community, working with the people that are out there, putting them in a position where they can have power and be able to get jobs and important. So that's important to me. It's simple, it's not hard. Those things are things that we need to elevate and we need to make sure that we are on top of. And so for me, that's near and dear to my heart. We can't say that we are looking at the growth and economic development in our city, but we overlook a certain population. We have to be doing racial equity and development in all quarters of District 3, and that's what I plan to do.
Good morning. So I just wanted to
Wait, Ms. Treves, wait, wait, Michael. Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Good morning. My name is Chutako Deline, and you made a statement about the Bethlehem Center. Bethlehem Center is still here. I am one of the teachers for Bethlehem Center. We are now under Alliance Center for Education, which is located right here in this building upstairs. So I'm sure if you reach out to them and see how you can help support and let the community know that they are still here, because they are, then that would be amazing. I hear you're saying a lot of pouring into. I guess for me, it would be, how would you pour into? Because as an educator and as a doula, it's a holistic approach, right, in the community? Because you can't heal one part of the body and not heal the other, especially if there are major functions. So how would you, or your organizations that follow you, pour back into the community what's not being done now?
Thank you so much for your question. I know that Bethlehem Center exists in this building, but when we talk about Bethlehem Center, we're talking about the Lucy Gis Center. We're talking about Blondie Melvin. We're talking about Rose Teasley, these teachers that raised me and this beautiful young lady sitting in front of me. So I don't know what extent, I don't know what to extent the Bethlehem Center is here, but we had team time. Downstairs where the kids were coming after school, we had Friday night discos. That's not happening over here. That's not happening over here. So when I say Bethlehem Center, I was raised and born in Bethlehem Center. My mom was raised and born in Bethlehem Center. I didn't know what not having Christmas meant because Bethlehem Center made sure they took us everywhere. And we had toys like, we had two family, two parent homes. So I didn't know what being poor was. I'm just being honest. So that's not happening over here at the center. I know some great things that happened. So when I say Bethlehem Center, I mean the root, the foundation, the community, the collaboration collaboratively for everybody that's around. There's only so much that I can do with my organization. Grassroots, my heart, the funding. So what I would do holistic approach is to get involved with people like yourself that care. We have to hear those voices and elevate them and give you the power and use that. If that's your lane and you're doing phenomenal things, we want to pour into you and elevate what you're doing. That's what I've done all my life. Now, how does that look and what does, what's that look like? I don't have all the answers. I'm never gonna tell you anything just because you're sitting in front of me and I want to make myself look good. I don't have to do that. The accolades that I have out there, they speak for themselves. So I haven't sat on city council before. I only look at the meetings. If you do that, I go back and I look the meetings and I study the meetings and a lot of what I see, I don't like. So when someone says long term, how are you gonna be here? I don't know what long term looks like for me. I don't know what I'm gonna do the next hour. I know that I plan every day when I wake up. I thank God for another day of breath in life with all the ballots and the guns and the activity that's going on around in the district that I live in. I pray for a better city where we all could work together and move forward, but I would love to have your ideas since you say you're still here, how we can make it to what it used to be? Because we didn't have this when I was growing up. There was not a lot of crime. I think I remember in the 12th grade, there was a football player named Alex Orange that got killed in Charlotte. And that's when I remember the violence started. So born and raised in this city, near and dear to my heart, but I would love to pour into individuals and organizations like yourself that are doing the work. Before you came in, Ms. Walton spoke on Freedom Fighting Ministries and Hill Charlotte. Those are two people that are near and dear to my heart that I work with. Now, I can't pour into Beauty After Bars, sit no city council because that's a conflict of interest, but I surely can pour into people that are duplicating what the wheel already looked like. We don't need to reinvent it. We just need to pour into it and execute it to a different level so it's effective. So thank you so much for your question. It means a lot to me.
We have a question from Ms. Jackie Edwards-Walton. Oh, I'm sorry. We have Mr. Tamar Robson, then Jackie Edwards-Walton, then Mr. Pfeifer, then Ms. Faith Treves.
Yeah, I remember Bethlehem Center when they built it. It was a red hill setting there. And I'm glad to hear you say that you're interested in more organizations like that. Because I remember the first, the first person to have run the Bethlehem Center, Ms. Hopkins. Here in my grandmother's friend, I live right across the street. But we need, I'm glad to hear you say we need more organizations like that, more organizations that's in the community.
Well, I know that, you know, my mom and my parents, so you know, they had the same upbringing as you. And you know what it was like to be a part of that whole community from the teenagers to the after school, to the pre-ped, to the nursery, and it was all right there together in that, that block. That's what I'm speaking of. All of that was right there together and it was effective. It was so effective that my mother, my grandmother, my mother and my, my family poured into the generations to come. But my children and their children don't have that. I know they don't have that because I live in the city where I don't see it.
Good morning again. There's a shortage of persons in the construction industry and there are several organizations here in the city who are providing education and training. But it's, it's not connected. We have Central Piedmont and Goodwill, which are which are the larger, the larger ones. But again, it's disconnected. And many of our young people, they're interested in the trades, but they do not want to come uptown on Elizabeth. And that's where most of the money is going for the training. So can you speak to that?
Absolutely. I think that, you know, Goodwill has been around for a long time, but there is systems that are in place that we may not be able to dismantle. I want to be able to look at you when I'm speaking to you directly about your question. I'm a product of that. You know, when I came home, I got my CDLs. People don't know that. I worked in warehouse. I have a safety manager. I wore the hard hat. I went out and I worked for ATC. I did environmental. I dug up holes in the ground. I know how to run contractors. I know how to run backhoes. I learned all of that, but people don't know that. The seven years that I spent incarcerated wasn't wasted. I knew that I was gonna have to come home as a blue collar worker and that is something that we have to see how we can funnel the work on the outside. People may not want to go to college, you know, but vocational training and trade and let people using their God gives and talents, using their hands to be able to be skillful, that's workforce development at its finest and to be able to let them do what they love to do. If you go into a community like West Boulevard where I was born and raised at, and I speak to that, 52 years old, my mom used to be the manager at Kentucky Fried Chicken. She didn't go through the applications that came in. My mom would go on the corner and ask people if they would want to work and train them to work in her store and all the stores in Kentucky Fried Chicken that used to be, as we've seen the development and grow. But it's now next on the corner of West Boulevard to Remount Road. My mom hired a lot of people out of Sandhurst, which is now Sky View on West Boulevard. I know in a Sandhurst. So to go back to what you're saying, to bring the trade out, if we could do that, if we could put on West Boulevard across the street where we're trying to decide on what we're gonna do with the role of businesses right there, if we could put something like that, you'll be surprised. Not you, because you know, but the community and the city will be surprised at how we can develop and build up that area with allowing people to go in and learn the trade right there in their community. One, it's good for economic, but it's also good for the people that live in the community and let them know that we haven't forgotten about them and that we love and care about them and that they mean something to the city as well as we continue to see the big buildings go up, the unaffordable housing go up. It'd be nice to see something like that in communities like Bates Ford Road, West Boulevard.
Where there is one on Bates Ford
Still, I know, but to continue to model that and go, go forward. I know about Bates Ford Road, but we're talking about West Boulevard, my difference. I love West Boulevard. It's dear to me, just like Bates Ford Road is dear to some other people.
So we got Mr. Pfeifer.
Since we're a little bit liberal on this, I have two questions. The first is public transit. CATS is run by the city of Charlotte. Now, there's a Metropolitan Transit Council that involves several communities. Would you advocate for a regional transit authority? In other words, it wouldn't be just run by Charlotte. It'd run by a separate component subdivision, a regional transit authority. That's question number one. Question number two, we talked about the school bond levy last year, last week. Do you support the proposal to pass the bond issue for the state schools?
Well... You're asking me about a regional transit operational system that's not ran by the city of Charlotte? Thank you so much.
Right. Presently, CATS is run solely by the city.
Correct.
Now, they do share an advisory council, the Metropolitan Transit Commission, with Huntersville, all those subdivisions, which is advisory. But would you advocate for all those folks coming together as equals on a regional transit authority to run the transit public system for the region?
Thank you so much for breaking that down for me because that was, that was something that I wasn't familiar with what you were saying. But now that you're breaking it down, I wonder if you do so, you're saying to include Huntersville, just nod your head, you don't have that on the microphone. Huntersville and the surrounding areas that use our transportation. I would be remiss to say that I would say yes right away without knowing all the details and what entails on that. I don't like to be a yes girl. That's not who I am. So I would like more information and see how that would affect the budget, how it would affect transportation and if it's gonna be efficient. And so if that's something that we can, you know, we can put in a parking lot like we do and we can come back to that. As far as school, I said yes, I supported that. We're getting into school, you know, which is the difference between city council. There's not a lot that we can do with schools. You know, we have other committees that are put in place for that, like the county and the school board, but I did say yes to those bonds because it's very near and dear to my heart as far as Charlotte McLeaver schools being up and running more effectively so that our children get the most they can out of their education. So that would be my response to your question.
All right, we have a question from Ms. Faith Treves.
Can you talk a little bit more about housing and your goals around affordable housing and specifically affordable homeownership? I'm affiliated with Hattner for Humanity, so affordable homeownership is really important. Then as we go into 2024, the citizens of Charlotte in 2022 approved a $50 million housing, housing bond measure. And that went to the Housing Trust Fund. So discussion around $100 million for the Housing Trust Fund, a bond measure going into 2024. And your thoughts on that?
I just have to be real honest. You know, when I moved out to Steel Creek, my home was $300,000. It's almost $500,000 now. Nothing. So when we talk about affordable, when you look at the growth that Charlotte has and all the people that are moving here, it's affordable to those people. Charlotte is affordable to the people that are moving here. But let's talk about what affordable looks like. It's not affordable to some of my family members. It's not affordable to people like my mom that went to work every day, that had one job. I would like to see more money. Like you said, the $50 million that was allocated, I know Councilmember Smudgy and Councilmember Lawana worked hard towards getting that approved. I would like to see more money allocated towards what affordable really looks like for the people that live in our community. If we continue to sell our homes, nothing is gonna be affordable. I would like for the people that own homes that are, have a legacy here, like my grandmother. We are keeping our property in Clinton Park. We're keeping our property in, we're more, we're keeping our property in Revolution Park. We're not selling to teach about home ownership and what that means. There are some programs out here. I would like to see more money allocated to programs so that we can keep our homes. But anything that we can do to make people in our community homeowners, because renting is not it. There's no control on it. It's out of whack. It's outrageous. I know a friend that started renting in Steel Creek four years ago at $1,700 a month. She's working on getting her credit right. Guess where she's at today? $2,600. That is nothing but a rip off and that's through imitation homes. There is no control on that. So it's near and dear to me too. So I say yes to allocate more money out so that people could buy homes and keep in our homes in our community. And then our seniors that have their homes, what does that look like for them? And making sure that they know that we care about them because there are programs. And I have to say this, the grassroots organizations like Fort the Struggle, Inc., that are stretching near and wide to make sure that we can take care of our community and make sure that they know that we exist and that those programs are there to support them.
We have a question from Ms. Ellery.
Thank you very much. Mine is not really a question. It's just a comment. When you were talking about the regional transportation board that is being discussed, be sure to look into that very carefully before you take a side on it. Because what I see in that is a group of people who are in the process of destroying our public school system. They are the hope of everything else we have. Their authority will go off into those small areas and they will become the majority and they will run the show. Just be very careful. Be sure you look at both sides very carefully. Now, one thing I would like to look into is combining some of the city and counties, different departments that's doing the same work. Some more of those, like the police and the city police, yeah. Those agencies who have been combined, we really need to look into that because many of us Because many of us senior citizens are getting information from a county board. A city board will come by and tell you, you can't do that, the county man is gone, he's retired, gone somewhere else. And they are forced to manipulate changes to your living conditions, that is not what you had intended. Just be careful with those, thank you.
Mr. Rose.
Yeah.
Oh, you want to, oh, sorry.
Yes, absolutely, yes, with all due respect, I want to um, like I said, it's a little different today because I'm by myself and I'm getting overwhelmed, there's a lot of questions, I'm just gonna be honest. When there's one person, there's always gonna be an influx of questions, but I'm very intelligent, I'm very poised, and I respect everybody. Um, that's why I said I'm not a yes girl. That's why you heard me saying I'm going to look, what I believe in, I believe in. I'm not gonna be able to please everybody, I'm not trying to, I'm not a people pleaser, I can never be that. Um, I thank you so much for that, with all due respect. I definitely support what you just said, I'm gonna continue to do my research, I have a four point O at John C. Smith for a reason. I study, I'm a senior studying criminal justice, my goal was to go to law school, I put that on hold. As a matter of fact, I came out of school last year, I offered myself up to run for office. So yes, a lot of people don't know, I'm trying to take back what the devil stole from me two decades ago. You know, I went to to prison at nineteen years old and delivered my daughter in federal prison, so I'm going back. To get my education because it's near and dear to me, I don't need it, you know, it's something I want. Um, and so I'm not a yes girl, I'm fifty-two years old, and so. I didn't get this far by saying yes to everything that people want me to say yes to, I have to say yes to what I believe in. Am I open to working for the greater good of the city? Absolutely, collaborating with everybody, that is liberals, an affiliate, Democrats, I was born a Democrat. I get that from my beautiful mom and my grandmother, I can't help that, that's when I was born, but I'm open to working with Republicans, liberals, an affiliate, anybody. That's what we have to do, we have to come together for what is going to work, so thank you so much for that. I am not a yes girl and I'm not, I don't intend to be. And I would also like to um. Say thank you for being so vocal and just speaking your heart, it means a lot to me.
You're welcome.
Mr. Rose.
The city, the city funded a lot of organizations, I mean. I I I I'm familiar with a lot of organizations where the city would give them money. Job creator, do whatever they want to, but is there any way that the city can, I mean, do the city monitor their funding, you know, like. I know a lot of these organizations are hit by, the salaries are just tremendous, you know, like a lot of money going to salaries. And I wanna know, is there any way the city monitored what they give organizations, like if they give an organization some money. Can they go in there and monitor, have them when they spend, or what it's spent on? Because it's only salaries that are paid.
Well, when you say salaries, you got me going two different ways, you got the salaries for the city or do you mean the funding for the organizations? Okay, but I just wanted to.
Organization's salaries. You know, just like if you got a, if I got an organization, I go to the city and I want a million dollars, but my salary is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Well, I'm gonna say that, yes, I mean, you know, when you're doing the work, you need to get paid for it. So we we, you know, when I apply for fun, you you're not, you're not letting me answer the question. I know, but your body language is is very disrespectful, it's dismissive.
All right, y'all, listen, let's really back in, let's really back in.
Really back in, however, if you ask me a question, then I lean back in the chair.
All right, y'all, let's yeah, let's let's really back in, let's let's really back in.
So funding, whenever you apply for any type of funding, yes, those funds are monitored, you can't do whatever you want to do with people's money. That's not how that works, so when someone gives you two million dollars, you have to present a request for a proposal. And you have to tell them specifically what that money is gonna be used for, and you have to show what that money is gonna be used for. Where it's allocated to, who's using it, and what you're using it for, so the answer to your question is. The city or nobody else is giving nobody two million dollars and just tell them to go throw a party and have fun with it. So those funds are monitored and they are scrutinized extensively, and people can get in a lot of trouble for not doing what they said they're gonna do with the city money.
I got a question about neighborhoods and narratives, so uh while the city is. Loud about the intention or the desire to create Noah naturally occurring affordable housing. There's also. An element of dismissiveness with the idea of not responding to slum lords or just that characterization of slum lords. However, if you, you know, peel the curtain back, slum lords are the Noah, you know, that is the naturally occurring affordable housing, however. You, how ambitious can you be with a property if the rent is, you know, substantially lower than the area would demand? So what are ways or how can we incentivize? Small uh income property owners who have the, who want a space to be affordable, but they can't really invest. Into the property as they would like to because the rent is so cheap?
Break that down, it's too long.
Okay, so.
I'm just being honest.
If I have a house and I'm charging a tenant seven hundred and fifty dollars for rent. I would like to do a lot to that house, maybe, let's say even a lawn maintenance plan or paint or whatever, but again, the rent is seven hundred and fifty dollars. So I can't afford to do the things I would like to do to this income property based on what I'm getting for, you know.
So you're saying as an owner, what can you do?
As an owner, how can the city incentivize me to make sure this property stays within the uh. The the character of the surrounding neighborhood and still it looks nice and is uh maintained while still being affordable?
Absolutely, uh thank you so much for the question, now, that's a good question because there's a lot of people talking about they have slum slum lords and. They're not pointing to them, they're not doing what they're supposed to do, my first thing is I always talk about um. The landlords, they need to get involved in the city council and to see what funds are available for them to be able to maintain their property, see what. The future looks like in that area, to see if they're in the right area so that they can continue to stay there. The city is going to grow, is not going to stop growing, the property value is going to continue to go up, so if if I were an owner. Um if I were um someone that had investment properties, I would look into ways that I could get funding. And there is money available, and I would like to see uh more money allocated to that so that people can continue to stay in the area. Where they have affordable property for seven hundred and fifty dollars, but I need to speak to you about what seven hundred and fifty dollars? What are we talking about, what area, do you have a specific area that you're speaking of?
Just anywhere.
Just, just, I don't know anywhere.
The idea is, this, these places are affordable, might not look the best, or the. The neighbors are frustrated because, you know, again, it might be a bit rundown, however. The other end of that conversation is, well, they're not really making that much money grossing on rent because they're keeping it low. So you can't commit to, you know, tens of thousands of dollars of renovations or just a. A lawn maintenance plan when you're keeping the rent intentionally low so this person has a space to live.
My mindset would be, that's a foundation, uh you know, that is just where you start renting, but I would like to see people become homeowners. I know you're talking about the landlords, incentivizing them and what they can do to keep their properties, their programs are here to help them. So they need to, I don't have all the answers for that, but I would like to support anybody that's gonna have a community where people can go to work on one salary and be able to stay there. But we need to make sure that we can understand exactly what that looks like. And how we could pour into the the owners that are in that area.
And on the other side of that, to see developers come in and build uh, you know, apartment complexes and have. A a few affordable, you know, market rate affordable housing options that still get incentivized by local government. While the small guy is really not being incentivized with anything to do the work that they're already doing, just, you know. It it just feels like some disparity.
Yeah, it's definitely disparity is there, but I would be an advocate for bringing the small guy to the table, so he can see what opportunities are available for he or she. Bringing them in the room, keeping them involved and engaged and seeing what it is, because when we go. And we bring them in the room, when we start this proposal of what zoning looks like or what we're gonna do in the area, let's take Southside Homes, for instance, what's near and dear to my heart. It looks good and it's still standing, but it's not gonna be there. It's not gonna be there, so what does that look like, so bringing people in, bringing them to the table. You know, and letting them know what's available for them, since they're already in a position where they want to provide. Housing for people that's affordable, where they could go to work every day just on one job, I would like to bring that person that you're talking about, that uh. That seems that disparities are there and they do exist, and we live in a world where disparities are are far across the board, so just bringing them in. To see what opportunities are available to 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 them, if you will, so they can be involved.
Thank you, we have Ms. Faye Triggs, then Ms. Norm Clay.
So this is kind of a, I I'm I'm not from Charlotte, I've been here probably about fifteen years and I've worked for elected officials in other areas. One of the things that I've noticed about Charlotte is gone from being a town to a major city. And the growth has been tremendous, so I have a little bit different view on this, um I would love your thoughts on. Raising the salaries of the city council members to the mayors. So that it is a full-time position for an elected official. And they don't have financially competing other interests or other jobs to support them being an elected official, your thoughts on that?
You put a tough one on me there, I haven't been in a position yet, so. Well, you can definitely ask him, I I but but I'm gonna respond though, uh being someone that has offered myself up for public office to. Learn the position, to be engaged, to um tell people what it really is and not what they think it is. Perception is everything, people can look back and say, you do this, you do this and you do that, but when I come out and say, hey, that's not my job, that's not in my scope, we don't do that. People then don't wanna hear that, they turn a deaf ear, there's a lot that city council cannot do, but like you say, as we move into a bigger city. To your question, absolutely correct. You, people have to survive, city council gets pennies, I'm a small business owner, I do multiple things. I have multiple streams of income, so to me, it's a part-time position, I'll, you know why I say that, because it's a part-time salary. You can't ask me to spend sixty hours, seventy hours a week like this fine young man back here do, and I support him. And we're on different ends of the spectrum, but he works his butt off in city council. I can't say that's what I'm gonna do, uh spending seventy hours a week in a position that don't pay me, I I can't say that. You know, so to your, to your response, I'm a multiple string um individual, I work really, really hard. I'm a single mom with a grand grandson, my own, my first grandson on the way in February, so for me. Um, it's 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 my religion, God, my family, and work in that order, it has to be, it can't be another way. And my dedicated and committed uh committed, absolutely, so to your question, yes. If that's something that we're gonna engage towards and move for, I don't see it happening right now, Charlotte is kinda way behind. Way, way behind other than being a city, even though we're growing, salary rise, a minimum wage and different things like that, workforce development. We're not there yet, we wanna be a big city, but we don't wanna have everything else that comes with having a big city. So to your question, thanks for bringing up that point, and where where do you come from, you don't mind me asking?
So I'm originally from Ohio, oh, I spent about, I'm sorry, I'm originally from Ohio, I spent about twenty-plus years in California. Uh worked for elected officials in California at the local city council level and at the state senate at the level. So really understand politics and bring that perspective to Charlotte, I've said, I've been here for about fifteen years. But understanding that when you have a part-time position as an elected official and you've got other income, salary. You're, you have really competing interests. And so if you are not a full-time employee getting benefits, stipends, whatever you need, so if your interest is full-time on the city. You can get in trouble, so that that's my opinion.
Oh no, we took it, then we get salary full-time and I.
It's not a lot.
I got you, well, thank you for advocating for, for how. I agree.
As a, even as a, as a taxpayer, I I don't think it's enough. To, it's it's not, it's not a full-time salary you can afford, this is all I'm doing a hundred percent on my city council job or my job is.
Thank you so much for that, I I agree with you, would you like to read?
I I um, I have.
No, no problem.
Uh, we got a question from Ms. McClellan.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Uh, you shared with us about, you said about a hundred thousand people live in your district and. And there was a certain percentage that actually voted. Uh, do, just, just share with us what you feel we need to do as a community. To engage our community to vote, because that's a problem that we have right now. And starting with your district, what uh do you plan to do to get people out to vote? Because that is an issue and and maybe if you have a plan, it may, it should be shared with the. Rest of the communities with the predominant African Americans that are not voting. Uh, because we have a lot of Democrats in the, in McLeaver County. And uh, but what would be your recommendations to get people to the polls and to actually vote and to be educated? About what and who they are voting for?
Thank you. Thank you so much for that, I have a a long history of voting, I've been voting since I came home. And that is the truth, that is public record. Democracy has always and always will be very near and dear to my heart, I mobilize, I organize. And and I can start. A revolution when it comes to getting people out to vote. The one thing I wanna share, and I know Charlene did not quite make it, but she should have, she was out on the ground, we knocked on doors. You have to let people know that you're not just sitting up. In a high position and that you don't care about them. When elected officials get elected, they forget about the people that put them there, you still have to knock on doors. You still have to go in the community, you still have to show up for for meetings, so my plan has always been along, engaging the people. But I knock on doors, I pull my numbers myself. Like you said, we don't make a whole lot of money, but I'm not above organizing and mobilizing. And getting people to the polls, letting people know that their voice matters, people have given up on democracy, young people don't even vote. When I pull the numbers, you know, you you hear all these things about, what are we gonna do, my daughters vote. They vote because of me, I'm not so sure if I wasn't so engaged a detail that they would vote. We have lost touch with our young people, they don't vote. The people that vote are seniors, those are people that vote, people that have been through something in life and has a history. With what democracy, what what democracy looked like, so my plan, it worked, I got sixty-one percent of the vote. I organized, I knocked on the vote, I knocked on the door, I was at the voting post. Not paying people to go out there, you know, yeah, you need some help on election day, but people also need to see you. You need to be visible and accountable, I mean, people have given up on democracy, I don't have all the answers to that. And and sometimes when the the things that I see, I understand why people give up on democracy, I I can't, I can't say I don't. I understand why people don't vote, am I frustrated with it? Yes. But I understand why they don't vote, we get the same, the same, the same, the same, all the time. You know, the definition of insanity is going with the same thing and expecting different results, where the city show has been the same for a long time.
I got a question, uh, can you, so one of the more frustrating aspects of being a citizen. And and in Charlotte is the expectation of the regular person.
I got another meeting.
Actually, less than that, we're gonna close it out, we got one more question, the expectation for people to understand and know how to navigate local government. In the sense that if people just need help, if you ask somebody, a city council member, and if it's a human servant, it's, that's the county, it's just kinda dismissive. Uh, I wanna know how you would be more open to collaboration to, again, exploring local government and creating, creating opportunities. For uh, again, cross collaboration with county and schools.
I don't know how specific we're, I I don't know how detailed we're gonna be able to be with that, I don't know um. It it sounds good, you know, to be able to say we're gonna go, and we all work together to a certain degree anyway. And we have to, I'm not gonna dismiss anybody, anybody that comes to me and want information and want to learn and grow, I'm gonna be able to meet them right where they at. And 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 hope that we can learn and grow together, that's a very good question for you, you say it's dismissive, but can you give me an example, just a blanket?
If I go to county and say, I, all right, I need help with this, that's the city, and that's where the cutoff is, there's no help to navigate where to go in the city or, you know, where to go in the county. If you don't go to the right department the first time, it's just, that's not us, there's no help to. Uh, get somebody, three, even three-one-one is kinda tough to navigate, if you don't, you're not really that savvy in local government.
Well, I I definitely appreciate the question, I think that we do need to work together, collaborate across the board so that people will understand what we do. I know that we have town halls all the time to say, what do you do, who does what, and guess what, that room was empty. Who, I was a part of the council, I was a. Who, I was a part of the council, I was a part of the committee that put it together, who does what? So people will know. So maybe we could get some of the lead organizations in the community, put something like that together again, because as the beautiful lady said from Ohio, we don't get paid a lot of money. And, and already to me, with me, I've been overwhelmed. My personal telephone number is out, um, in the media, not, not for city council, that's not what it's for. It's for my organization, because I've always been very responsive to what I do when it comes to justice involved individuals. So that's how my number got out there. But you would not believe the influx of emails and telephone calls that I've gotten about things that are unrelated to me, but I did dismiss them. I respond on the email and tell them exactly where they need to go and what they need to do. It's an individual, it's called being, it's humanity. And if anybody that's running for public office, that sit on county commissioner, that sit on school board, that sit on city council, does not have the decency and the respect to take an individual or constituent that doesn't know what they need and can't guide them, then that person don't need to be a part of the government, they just don't.
We got two quick questions from, uh, Tom Ross and Mr. Dr. Thomas.
Is there any way you can get the general public and the council politicians together? I mean, you know, where, where they can talk to each other, express their ideas?
Absolutely, we call that town hall meetings, and we're, you know, we have times that we set that up so that we can talk and bring the general public together. Also, there's open sessions where the public can come in and speak openly about what they feel and how they feel when it comes to collaborating in the community, so I'm always open to hear from people. The position is the people's position, it's not mine. So I wanna hear what people have to say and how they feel all the time. But, you know, when I come to these meetings, I see the same people. And I know people may look at it online, but Sarah Stevenson has been around for a very, very long time, and the views are very low, people are not engaged, people don't care. And so when she said, what can we do to get, um, people back involved, I think that's a great point that you're having. Let people know, but people have given up on democracy, they're giving up on hope. I hope that I can be a restorer of hope, that I can bring people back together, and that we can collaborate. But, you know, when something's been done so wrong for so long, people don't wanna hear it. You know, I don't know if me coming in is a good thing or a bad thing, I'm just gonna be honest. You know, because when people have worn the weight of trouble, and what our council looked like, and, and the dismissiveness as, uh, Mr. Will spoke about, you know, that becomes an engagement where people will make you give up and not want to be involved. So I hope that hope is restored through engagement and, um, the truth. You know, being accountable, accessible, and committed to our people is what we need to do. And so, yes, I would love to see, um, us coming together, but that's what the town hall meetings are for. But there's low attendance, there's low, uh, visibility. Even when I go back and look at Sarah Stevens, if I can't come to all of them, I go look at them, I take notes. This is a huge platform. It's, attendance is low, and, um, the views are low. And so that tells me that people are not engaged, they're not involved, or they don't care. But when it's time for election, you will see the numbers rise. And so I would, I would say this to constituents, be mindful of who values your time.
Thank you. One last question from Dr. Thomas, then we're gonna go into announcements, uh, and close it up.
I'm thinking about our city, and our city needs to know its history. They need to know, like, when you were a child in that childcare center, Lucy Gist's childcare center, you were singing songs that I wrote, that the kids from Bethlehem Center were on, there's, on the album with me. And they performed all over Charlotte at a lot of events. They, we did a lot here that I have used through the years, as, as I have done trainings all over the country, all over the world. The kids from Bethlehem Center were the main reason that I, 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 I learned how to, um, I learned how to organize children in such a way that we could present all over the world. And also, I became the coordinator of the North Carolina Head Start Collaboration Project back in the nineteen nineties. Um, and then I remember an organization that was started at Bethlehem Center where we were inviting organizations throughout Charlotte, and we met once a week, uh, a, a month, once a month. And, uh, there was a lot that was going on at Bethlehem Center. The Methodist women would come together from all over regional, the region, western North Carolina. They came together, Lucy Gist would put African-Americans in top positions. Um, people need to know that story.
Yes.
And when we're talking about helping our communities come together, we need to know what models we have had, working models that we have had that were successful. Uh, we need to know more about that. So I'm, I'm thinking in terms of the history of Bethlehem Center, and using Bethlehem Center as a model for other communities around Charlotte.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas.
I was responding. Thank you so much, Dr. Thomas, for that, that is absolutely correct. Um, so I, you remember Michael Porter and Mr. King? Okay, yeah, okay, I'm just saying, I, I know what I was brought up on and what worked, so that I wouldn't say yes to what you're saying. Uh, a lot of times when people, um, hear me speak, or they see my presence, they only know what is in the media, they don't know how it was brought up, or Bethlehem Center was a major part of my life, and Blondie Melody, Rose Teasley, and Lucy Gist, who I met personally, and how we went to all of the churches and engaged, and just was not judged as children, and that we didn't know that we were poor. Because when we went to Bethlehem Center, there was no such thing. It was an influx of love and programs that worked and were effective. So I would say yes to what you're saying, and thank you so much for that.
All right, thank you so much, uh, in respect to, uh, Ms. De'Amara Brown's time, and she has a ten o'clock meeting, and so do I.
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty meeting, uh, please give her a round of applause. Uh, briefly, the lady one had, had an announcement. Senator Steve, oh, we have Ms. Teresa. And I'm gonna say, while I walk over to Ms. Teresa, shout out to Southside Homes, no, I, we have had so much discussion around. Southside Home, Baltimore Avenue, huh, that's hometown, all right, go ahead, Ms. Teresa.
Voting starts this Thursday, and it's only gonna be at the Hal Marshall Center. Please, 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 let's vote.
All right, we got one in the bag from Ms. Charlene Henderson.
Hello, everyone, um, on the twenty-eighth, uh, this month, we will be having a prayer walk that will be happening at Tom Hunter Park, and we would love you to attend, but it is at Tom Hunter Park, and I will send that extra information to Steve. But it is a prayer walk for our communities of Sugar Creek, Tom Hunter, Otrion, prayer walk.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, our guest next week will be the representatives for, uh, the candidates for District-
Six.
Six. Uh, so please, again, attend if you can next week, tell a friend, and tell a friend. Thank you again for attending, today is Tuesday, going to form, Dr. Thomas, play us out. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.